I call this meeting to order. Let us stand for the flag salute and a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated. Laura, may we have a roll call, please? Here?
Carol?
Here?
President Circo?
Present.
Present.
Thank you. Welcome to the Alcoa Plan and Commission meeting. This meeting is being livestreamed on the City of Alcoa website. If you are joining us in person today, please wear a face covering when not speaking. I don't see anyone here. Appeals of final decisions of the Planning Commission made this evening must be filed in writing with a city clerk before 5:00 PM Friday, July 30th, 2021, and must include the payment of a filing fee. If you wish to speak on either a non-agenda or agenda item tonight, please fill out a request to speak, card located by the agenda, and return it in to the secretary who will call you up to speak when the agenda item comes up for public comment. Wow, we're full of people here this evening. We ask that you give us your name, spelling your last name. Speakers are limited to three minutes. The display on the podium, as well as the other monitors in the chambers, will show time counting down. At 30 seconds, the podium clock readout will turn red, signifying you have 30 seconds until the end of your time. Applicants and individuals representing groups of people may be allowed more time if appropriate. All public hearing comments should be addressed to me as the chair of the commission and not to individual commissioners or to staff members. Please turn off all electronic devices if you have not already done so. Pursuant to City Council Resolution 114-79, a commissioner has received evidence related to a matter before the Planning Commission other than an unescorted view of the subject property is required to disclose such information at the hearing. Well, since there's no one here, I guess I won't call for a public comment. I haven't received any public comment. Okay, thank you. Now we get to the consent calendar. A single motion will cover all items on the consent calendar. Does the commission wish to pull a consent calendar item for discussion? Does the staff wish to pull a consent calendar item for discussion?
No, we do not.
All right.
I move to adopt the minutes. I move to adopt the minutes.
All right.
I'll second that.
A motion made by Commissioner Circo, second by Commissioner Maros. Please vote. And I'm also voting because I attended the meeting through my computer last meeting. So I was aware of what's going on.
Chairman Sotile, you would just clarify whether you reviewed the materials from the last meeting?
Yes, I did. Okay. Very good. Okay. The second item is the General Plan Amendment, Housing Safety and Environmental Justice. Request is the General Plan Amendment, and the CQ recommendation is a negative declaration, and staff recommendation is approval. Staff?
Thank you, Chairman Sotile, members of the Planning Commission. I'm Melissa Devine, I'm the Planning Manager, and with me presenting this item is Spencer Hayes, Associate Planner. And we also have a couple of members of our team participating via Zoom tonight. One is Alfonso Camacho, the Assistant Planner, as well as Veronica Tam, our Housing Element Consultant, Associate Planner, apologize. And they'll be available for questions at the end of the presentation. So the plan for this meeting, this is the adoption hearing for the General Plan Amendment, is to do a brief overview of the elements and then really respond to the questions and issues that were raised at the June 15th workshop. So just to provide some overall background, the city's general plan is our overall vision for how the city will grow and develop over the next 20 to 30 years. It identifies land uses and policies that are representative of the Planning Commission, City Councils, the residents' desire for the future of our community. The project before you today is a General Plan Amendment, which will amend the housing element and the safety element of the general plan, and we will adopt a new environmental justice element. These are three of the nine required elements of the general plan. And because we are updating the housing element, that has triggered, due to some recent state legislation, the update to the safety element, and also the requirement that we address environmental justice issues. Our general plan was adopted in 1971 and has been amended over the years, but has not been comprehensively updated. However, you'll see with these elements that we are fully addressing all of the issues in the safety environmental justice as they relate to housing. The safety element addresses six hazards in our community. These are air pollution, extreme heat, flooding, geological hazards, hazardous materials, and wildfires. And the intent, the overall goal, is to protect our residents and our properties from these hazards through policies and actions that the city will undertake. These policies and goals address improving our air quality. One of the ways we do that is through increasing what's called green infrastructure, through the planting of shade trees, and implementation of landscape areas. We'll also be looking to ensure that our buildings in the city, our new development, is constructed to safety standards and building codes, and that we're doing everything we can to promote a safe community. And this includes helping residents to prepare for emergencies and making sure that we're focusing on prevention of emergencies and disasters. And then lastly, you'll see several policies that relate to emergency response and public safety, both from an operations perspective, but also making sure that our residents are well-informed through public information. The next element is the environmental justice element. And since this is a new element of the general plan, it hasn't been addressed before. It's a more recent state requirement. It addresses some new topic areas. And one of the big pieces of the environmental justice element is identifying disadvantaged communities. And through this process, we've identified 11 census tracts that qualify as disadvantaged communities. And the reason that they qualify is because the residents in these neighborhoods experience higher public health risks. So there's some disparities between the environment in these communities. They're exposed to more hazards such as poor air quality or close proximity to industrial businesses. But there's also social aspects to classifying disadvantaged or environmental justice community, and those are things like access to education. So are there good schools in the community? Access to employment? Do people have transportation and ready access to good jobs? So the focus of this element is really in how we can reduce the increased health risks that people in these communities experience. So how do we kind of help them step up to meet where all the other communities in Alcoa are in terms of having access, having good air quality, having good access to public facilities, healthy foods, that their homes are safe and sanitary, and that they can access recreational opportunities, whether that be walking or biking or park programming? And our focus with this element was on our existing programs. So what is the city doing well that we could build upon and maybe include some new policies that will help to ameliorate some of these issues? And so I've called out a few of these here. One is our apartment inspection program. That's a proactive program that we've been going out and inspecting apartments, making sure that issues are addressed and the situations don't become, you know, quite terrible before something gets reported or that, you know, there's something happens and, you know, we get calls because a roof is caved in because of ongoing, you know, water intrusion issues. The other program that has been very successful is our tobacco enforcement program through our tobacco retailer program. You may have heard about the minor decoy operations that the city helps to fund through CASA that make sure that minors don't have access to tobacco in our community. And then there's new policies, new land use policies, that speak to limiting or, in some cases, prohibiting new land uses in proximity to residents in these communities that could further exacerbate the health issues that they're experiencing. One example of that could be a new industrial business. So making sure that we look at new land uses that could have harmful effects on these neighborhoods very closely and determine if they're appropriate. And then the last item here identified is public information. Another piece of environmental justice is making sure that residents in these neighborhoods have access to their local government, that they have a voice in city government, that they can access civic services. So really improving our public information and outreach to residents in the neighborhoods is a critical aspect of that. So I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Spencer, who will provide an overview on the housing element.
Good evening. So unlike the other elements, the housing element is subject to a lot more statutory requirements, and it has to be updated on an eight-year cycle, unlike the other elements. There are a few kind of overarching requirements that the housing element must include, which is an assessment of the current and future housing needs in a profile of the community, an analysis of opportunities and constraints to housing, and then the sites inventory, which I'll discuss coming up in just a moment. And then also a housing plan, which is basically the goals, programs, and policies that we will implement to address housing needs. So diving into the sites inventory, I'm not going to go back and cover the whole community profile like we did in the workshop a couple of sessions ago. But diving into the sites inventory, it should demonstrate that we have the land inventory that is adequate to accommodate the regional housing needs allocation, the RENA, and growth in the city. So as we covered before, the RENA is approximately 3,200 units this time around, and they're divided between low income, moderate income, and above moderate income categories. And so the methods that were implemented to select these housing inventory sites was, you know, a little bit of staff knowledge and expressed interest from property owners in housing development at certain locations, identifying those vacant or non-vacant properties that are underutilized with some measuring criteria. And it looks like I left a colon in there. I'm sorry about that. And then the sites inventory map is included in the housing element, and also a table which details, you know, properties of each individual site that was selected in the sites inventory. No zone reclassification was required with this housing element, so we are not changing the density at any property to meet the RENA. And most of the sites were identified within the mixed-use overlay zone and also the Transit District Specific Plan, the TDSP. And so just really briefly, it's probably very hard to see on the screens here, but this is what the map looks like for the sites inventory. You'll note there's a few small red dots scattered around. And basically, those are sites where we've entitled a project, but it hasn't had building permits issued. So technically, we're already counting those sites towards our RENA for this cycle. All right. And up next, so I just wanted to touch briefly again, highlight some of the programs and policies that were implemented. So the overarching housing goal was to increase, improve, and preserve a variety of safe, decent, affordable housing units meeting the existing and future needs of Alcoa residents of all income levels, including special needs populations. And obviously, there are a handful of overarching goals with a handful of policies underneath each of those goals. But just to highlight a few, there were policies to update zoning code to align with state regulations, remove governmental constraints to development, continue offering programs such as down payment assistance or housing rehabilitation programs, and as Melissa mentioned, the apartment unit inspection program to monitor net housing inventory to meet the RENA. So basically, if one of the sites doesn't receive as many units as we had anticipated, we have a little bit of a buffer in our sites inventory that allows us to say, yes, we still have inventory to meet our RENA goals. And then also, for example, there's programs to facilitate ADU production and update the zoning code to meet state regulations for ADUs. And then the one thing that we discussed at the last meeting was the new section in the housing element, which is to affirmatively further fair housing. And that's to promote inclusive communities, further housing choice, and to address any racial and economic disparities. And so HCD, Housing and Community Development, had some specific guidance that they had sent out to cities. And so based on that guidance, we had presented a few different meaningful actions, as what they're called, to implement in this housing element. And so, for example, a few of those are to distribute an informational packet to residential property owners regarding the housing choice vouchers. Another one is to continue offering services through CSA in multiple languages. Another would be to prioritize improvements in those environmental justice communities that Melissa was just mentioning. So that could be something like making sure that we're addressing any sidewalk repair issues or new lighting projects within those EJCs. And then also to inform developers of opportunities surrounding low-income housing development in the city. I think Melissa's gonna, we're gonna attack team this one, I think.
Can I ask a quick question before we move on? What is a, can you go back to the last slide? What is a housing choice voucher, excuse me? Is that a physical thing or is that just a pamphlet?
It's like, well, the housing choice vouchers are basically Section 8 vouchers. But basically, this would be to, a pamphlet informing multifamily property owners primarily of how they can, I don't know if you want to try to explain better than me?
So it's geared not towards the recipients of the voucher, but more to educate property owners on what it is like to have a tenant who's using one of these vouchers at their property.
Okay, cool. That makes sense. Thank you.
Great. So then now we'd like to turn towards all of the issues and comments that were raised at the June 15th workshop. We put together a table that's in the report that details out each of the issues and then where you can find policies that address that issue or if we've made edits, and also if there's any other information that we wanted to offer up to the Planning Commission. We've highlighted what we thought were some of the main points here that I'll just briefly go over. The first issue is about the retention of trees or planning of new trees within development, with new development. And we've called out some different policies in the EJ and the safety element that both talk about incentivizing the retention of mature trees, but also new requirements for new development, as well as prioritizing the planting of shade trees in our environmental justice communities. And then there's also some information about some of the work that Public Works is doing for planting city street trees in Alcoa as well. And feel free to jump in at any time if you wanted to discuss each of these individually. I can kind of pause after each one. The next issue. The next issue raised was about the possibility of converting portions of our concrete channels where we maybe historically used to have natural creek channels into a more natural space. And right now, the focus of the city is really on taking some of our existing natural channels and restoring those. So one of the projects that we highlighted here is the Broadway Creek Restoration Project. That if you want some more specifics, we have Jeff Manchester with Public Works. He'd be happy to provide some more details on that. The next issue was in and around school gardens or community gardens. And we do have some policies within our environmental justice element that speak to promoting school gardens as well as community gardens. And we also wanted to note that those are permitted by rate. Basically, you don't need a use permit in most of our residential and commercial zones. So we've tried to make it as easy as possible for new gardens to be established. And then the next question was about assistance programs for utility costs and what was available to folks there. We don't have anything that specifically speaks to that in the policies, but we do talk to weatherization programs that can be used by lower-income households. So the city funds some CDBG programs, the Critical Home Repair Program, and the Housing Rehabilitation Programs. And those can be used for energy efficiency improvements that can reduce bills, utility bills. And there is currently some, there are programs right now, they're available on the short term as part of COVID response for utility, both at the county level and the city level. Want to jump in? Keep going. Okay. Mono roll. And then the next one was about maintenance issues. We know this is a bit of a complex issue here in and around, you know, some specific areas that were discussed, whereas the Transit Center and then the areas around Magnolia. We do have some policies that speak to beautification projects for streets and sidewalks. And Public Works does have a program that addresses repairing sidewalks that are lifted. And we're actually putting more money into it this fiscal year than we ever have. So that Public Works is really focused on reducing those trip hazards and making sidewalks safe. And then the next issue was about helmet safety and about, you know, helping, you know, children and folks be more safe when they're biking in our community. And let's see, we did add a policy into our environmental justice element. There's already work that has been ongoing with Safe Routes to School. Mario Sanchez and Traffic Engineering has, for several years, been working and partnering with Radie Children's Hospital on Safe Routes to School projects. I think this current one has wrapped up or is wrapping up as we speak now at 12 elementary schools. And then, let's see. Cleanliness surrounding the Transit Center. So there are policies that do address that, and I think this is a little bit out of order for me. So just bear with me a moment. Okay, yes. There is a policy in the environmental justice element about bus stop maintenance and trolley stop maintenance. And we do hear this is a recurring theme and issue. This is something that has obviously been addressed with MTS, and the city continues to work with MTS on maintenance onsite at the trolley station. And there was a question about whether or not the Casino Connection could possibly partner the casino buses in the area. And we did want to identify that we believe the Casino Connection is no longer in operation, but there is some, there are some casino buses that are still entering the MTS site. And then the last item was safe parking. And that has been included as one of the kind of menu of options under our homeless services program in the housing element.
Melissa, would that be safe parking so people can sleep in their cars?
Yes, that's correct. And that would be not just any location, that would be a safe parking location where we have a provider who's willing to go in and provide, you know, the social work and the supportive services. And we have facilities there where there's, you know, bathrooms and places for people to access sanitary services.
And then grandize the rest area?
There's a few models for that that have been running successfully in San Diego County. I'm blanking on the name of it. It's Dream, it's going to come to me in a moment, where I believe Jewish Family Community Services has been running these safe parking locations and parking lots, large parking lots, usually associated with like a religious facility or other community facility where it can be provided. Dreams for Change, New Dreams was in there. So we're investigating, exploring the idea of possibly using that as one of the tools that we use to address homelessness in Alcoa. We just haven't quite landed on a partner to work with and a property yet.
And what are the experiences of these existing parking spaces? Have they had good experience, bad experience, or mediocre?
The programs that are being run in other cities currently have been very effective, as I understand it. They've been very effective in providing safe places for people to park their vehicles. You know, there are folks that don't have another place to live right now, and so they're going to be sleeping in their car. In this instance, they have a safe, secure place where, you know, they can get connected to folks who will help them find permanent housing. You know, they have a restroom to use. They can, you know, be safe while they're experiencing this.
You know, if you were going to pilot that, you should talk to Harold Brown at ECTLC. That would be right up his alley. Because he's already got the resources to get those people back in homes. And he's got a little parking space out there in front, you know, maybe where they're waiting to be intook, you know, maybe it's a week or two in their car. So that would be something I would suggest is maybe talking to Harold Brown about that. Because I see the flip side, if it's not managed or run well, it's going to become a hotspot for crime, narcotics, everything under the sun will be just there. So that's, I think that's huge for the community to have, somebody that kind of knows what they're doing. Maybe look into that.
Exactly. And I do believe our housing folks have had those discussions with Harold already, with ECTLC. So this is not something we're committing the city to. We're just identifying it as a possible option for us to address homelessness.
Sure.
I do know under East County Chamber, I know there's a couple, for a while, there's been meetings at the church up there on Granite Hills, all over the county, and they have them, I think, monthly, I believe. And I know Pacific Southwest Association of Realtors also gave a donation for a pamphlet to advise people homeless to give out to the people, to tell them where the safe parking places are. And I know some of them do have public, like, mobile restrooms and things like that. So they do have things already in the works that have been for quite some time. And I think we also gave a grant for those little signs that says, "Don't give money to the homeless." You know, kind of trying to put them in a direction to better their lives and not hand out, kind of like a handout type thing.
I believe that's through the East County Homeless Task Force. Yeah, the Shelter and Housing Solutions Group. I sat on that for quite a while. They discussed the safe parking.
Any other questions or comments before we move on on the issues raised or responses? Fantastic. So moving on to CEQA, a negative declaration was prepared for this project. We did an initial study and found that there were no potentially significant impacts as a result of the adoption of the General Plan Amendment. And this is because it's really just a policy document. It doesn't authorize any new construction. As we've talked about before with the housing element, we identify the sites. But the city is not responsible for building housing there and is not specifically approving a project through the adoption of a housing element. The negative declaration did go through a public review that concluded on July 12. One comment letter was received from Caltrans, but it didn't raise any issues related to the adequacy of the document. It was really just informational, for informational purposes. In terms of public notice and outreach, there's been a significant amount of public outreach as part of this project. We've brought it before the commission several times for informational items and workshops, but we've also held virtual meetings, we've done surveys, published newsletter articles and social media posts, did stakeholder interviews. So kind of a wide variety of public outreach, doing what we could during COVID, which was obviously very challenging. And there's a full table in your agenda report that details out, you know, quite exhaustively, all the public comments that we did receive. And that was the basis for the preparation of each of these housing, each of these elements. We have been through the review with the California Department of Forestry and Fire Protection, or CAL FIRE. It is now mandatory, required that a safety element go through that review. And it did go through their committee, and they didn't have any further recommendations. In fact, they gave the city praise for addressing wildfires in a very proactive manner in our city. And then we also put the housing element through the review of the California Housing Community Development Department, the initial review. That concluded back in May. That was before we had the guidance on the affirmatively furthering fair housing piece. And so now that that is prepared, it does have to go back through Housing Community Development for one final review. That's their certification review. There is the possibility that we may have to bring back the housing. There is the possibility that we may have to bring back the housing element if there are changes for a readoption. But we have also built in some flexibility if there's some minor changes that are requested, that those could be done through a non-legislative process. And the findings that we've made for this project is that we believe that this general plan amendment is essential for the city to ensure that we are providing sufficient sites for future housing in our city and the maintenance of adequate and safe housing. The adoption of the safety elements ensures that risks, both natural and man-made, from man-made hazards to people and property are minimized or reduced where we can and that residents in our disadvantaged communities or environmental justice communities have access to safe and sanitary housing, quality food options, recreational opportunities, and a voice in our local government. We have met all the noticing requirements and review requirements for our general plan amendment, and it is internally consistent with the other elements in our general plan. With that, staff's recommendation is that the planning commission adopt the next resolutions in order, recommending city council approval of the negative declaration and the general plan amendment. And here I'd like to note that we did joint notice this item for city council on July 27th. And this is because we do have a statutory deadline of August 15th to adopt a housing element in order for us to maintain our current eight-year housing cycle and make sure that we continue to be in compliance with state law. So that concludes our report, and we do have our housing element consultant online as well. So if there's any detailed technical questions, we have that support as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Melissa. Good job.
When does the housing elements every eight years? What about the safety and environmental justice?
There is no mandatory schedule of update for all the other elements. It's basically when, you know, information or policies become outdated or need to be updated to keep pace with time.
Good. It really looks to me like all the hard work we did eight years ago and maybe even before that really helped create a good foundation and some bones for the housing element. Like, we didn't have to rezone anything this time. You know, it's there, ready to go. And the land mass isn't changing, population's not fluctuating too much. I don't know what the new census is going to say, but, so, cool. All right, good job. Thank you.
Fellow commissioners, you have any other questions for staff?
Got no questions. We've done a wonderful job. Thank you, staff, for listening to our comments over the many years. And I think all of the policies that we've been building have made it pretty straightforward when it came to the housing element update. So thank you.
Yeah, I just want to say, I mean, the newest person on the commission, I mean, this is very impressive, all of the work that's obviously gone into this and how comprehensive and everything that it is. And as a longstanding resident of Alcoa, it's very exciting to see a lot of these things be addressed. And, you know, you guys did a great job. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Pollock Root, you have any comments?
You guys had a plethora of information, but they, I mean, the way that you guys have put together is great. It's very straightforward. Thank you for listening to our, lots of comments we had at the last meeting and put it together so eloquently. So I'm really looking forward to many years to come. So, good job.
I believe that the streamlining occurred a long time ago when we implemented the overlay through the different zones. I think that opened the door for what we're experiencing right now. And I think it was great. Whoever thought the overlay, it was a good idea. Don't you agree, fellow commissioners?
Absolutely.
I think, is anybody ready to make a motion?
Sure, I move to adopt the next resolution in order recommending city council approval of the negative declaration in general amendment plan.
I second that motion.
Okay, motion made by Commissioner Rose, second by Commissioner Circle. Please vote.
Unanimous vote. Passing.
Right. So what's on the next agenda item here?
Adjournment.
Is it adjournment? That's it?
After staff has communication, I don't know.
Yes, is there any staff communication?
There is. I just wanted to express my thanks to all of you for getting to work with you. Some of you for seven years, some of you for a little bit less than that. But since this will be my last meeting, sitting here as a planning manager for the planning commission, it's really been a pleasure. I consider working with the planning commission one of the highlights of my career here in Alcoa. And the professionalism that each of you exhibit and your thoughtfulness and just how you always have Alcoa's best interests at heart has been very meaningful for me. So thank you very much for that. I just have one project update, and that is the 300 Alcoa Boulevard Townhome Project did go to city council last Tuesday, and that was approved. So that project will be moving forward, and they've already been kicking off their civil plans. And we had a meeting today with their engineering team. So they're hoping to be under construction next year, which is really exciting because, like you mentioned, we, you know, we did the mixed-use overlay, we did the transit district plan, and now we're seeing the projects coming to fruition out of that, so.
Yeah, that's great.
That's wonderful.
You think we're not going to ask, "What's up? Where are you going? What are you doing?"
So I will be moving to Germany. My husband's accepted a job there. So just in a few short weeks, I'll be on my way to Bavaria.
Wow, very cool. What an exciting adventure.
Thank you.
Will you be planning in Bavaria?
Probably not planning in Bavaria, but I will be taking a close look at how they do their planning in Bavaria.
Very good.
Well, you should enjoy Oktoberfest. It's massive in Germany.
Yes, looking forward to it.
You'll be here at the city until July 30th, correct?
Yes, I'll be here till July 30th. So if there's anything that you'd like me to follow up on, any questions you have, feel free to send those my way. We will likely not have a meeting in August. It will probably be dark at this point. And so our next meeting would be the first meeting in September, which is just after Labor Day. I expect that the director, Anthony Schut, will likely be serving as a secretary until they find a replacement.
Cool. That'll be fun.
Commissioners, do you have any reports or communications that you want to share? No? Okay.
I'd like to share something. I had the opportunity to go down to the build-off at East County Transitional Living last week and was very impressed, especially because it takes me a month to paint a wall. And in just a few hours, they had two buildings framed. So it was really exciting to see, and especially knowing what that's going to mean for the community and for those that are really looking, help for that hand up in homelessness. I know that that just means that they can help that many more people. And I read about how they're going to be able to move in more families, which is really exciting. So that was really, that was a great project to see.
Awesome.
I forgot about when that was, and I drive by that every day. And so one day I'm driving by and I see the forms for the pads. And I drive by the next day and I see that they've poured the concrete. And a couple of days go by and the forms come off. And then I drive by the next day and there's two buildings. I'm like, was that yesterday? Wow!
No kidding.
They work fast, don't they?
Yeah.
Now, my notes stay for the adjournment to August 3rd. Should I just say the adjournment is sometime in September, or should I say August 3rd?
We haven't officially canceled the meeting yet, so we can adjourn to August 3rd. But you can make vacation plans for August.
Well, the commission, the planning commission meeting will be adjourned to August 3rd. Do I have a second? Okay.
Second that.
Second that, okay. Motion made by Commissioner Sotile, second by Commissioner Pollock Root. Please vote.
Unanimous?
Have a wonderful vacation. I'll be in Lake Powell.
Oh, there you go.
However, they declared a state of emergency at Lake Powell. The water level is very low.
Are they going to let you go on it, though?
I don't know. They say that the houseboats, yes, but not the private boats, the small boats.
Yeah, they're letting water out of some other dam, I guess.
Yep.